For Resolution twenty-three oh one for certification of the closing meeting.
Roll call vote is required by section two point two dash thirty seven twelve point D.
Ms. H. Scrub?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Commonwealth?
Aye. Please stand and join me for the pleasure of allegiance, followed by the application.
I believe to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, on one God, indivisible, and every being just as well.
One of the problems we always break with the county, the county's business, is that we move our minds and power, Lord Jesus, Almighty God, that we consent forth, that we ourselves can come together to be the best that we can be, that we can serve the county in the way that the county should be served, that each and every decision that we make, Lord Jesus, that you be a part of the decision making, help us as we go through this process, Lord Jesus Almighty, in your holy name, be great, amen.
Next item is approval of the agenda.
Yes, item number eight, approval of consent agenda, eight, B, eight, two point zero zero one, resolution twenty-three dash oh six, which pertains to the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. Then on the item number nine, the public hearing zoning matter, this matter has to be delayed until September the sixth, due to an error with the ad announcement by the independent messenger. So those are my recommendations.
I move we approve consent agenda with added corrections.
Second. This is the regular agenda.
Oh, yes, regular agenda, I'm sorry.
Second. All motions been made in private, second, all those in favor, signify on roll call vote.
Ms. H. Scrub?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Commonwealth?
Aye. Next is approval of the consent agenda, which consists of minutes from July fifth meeting, legislature matters, March.
I move we approve consent agenda.
Second. Motion's been made in private, second, all those in favor, signify on roll call vote.
Ms. H. Scrub?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Commonwealth?
Aye. That takes us to items of appointments, first of the matters, current matters. Good evening.
Good evening.
Along with the monthly updates that I sent Denise, I also have a lot of free additions to that, our own contract originally was supposed to come in last week, but he's here this week, he started taking up letter today on six nineteen and then six eleven area, so he should be on the grass in the next couple of days. He's working on three oh one, I believe, he said Thursday is our primary address for him. Also interstate ninety-five, the interstate ninety-five, all the way to Sussex Canyon will be getting new pavement this summer, just to let you know that that will be coming, it's probably going to happen in the next thirty to forty-five days. Right, six thirty-three, I think I sent Lynn something earlier on that, right, six thirty-three, construction is complete, he did ask me to take a look at the pavement driving at twenty end where they tied it in, and I've got my traffic engineer people taking a look at that, man. The limited road, safety issue, because Kane brought up, they had. Review that, I haven't gotten the final report.
You need a question or a review?
I'll give you a question, yeah, like that question. And that's all real things, I don't take any concerns in my ass.
I have two concerns. First one is Rock Bridge Road fifty-one thirty-four, they need the ditch cleaned, water running into the yard. And about a month ago, you all cleaned the ditch on Camp Brown Road?
At one, Mr. Pope sent the email.
Yeah, you got it, you get the picture?
Yeah, I got it, I'll take a look at that tomorrow.
That's it.
My complaint's always the same, the exits look horrible, it is on exit eight, I know it's one week, this is as long as I need.
Well, I got a meeting with the contractors that handle ninety-five, Thursday, I believe, and let's suppose.
Always still need help with that.
He's got some side trimming scheduled, but I'm not sure what rights, I'll find out and let Lynn know.
I know there was side trimming three oh one today.
Okay.
Anything else for Mr. Key?
Thank you, Mr. Key.
Thank you. Next is Granger County Public Schools, Dr. Kelvin Edwards, superintendent, will present a request for reallocation of funds for fiscal year twenty-three point three.
I say good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, this is our board supervisors, good evening, Dr. Wilkins and everyone. I stand before you, requesting a reallocation of funding for fiscal year twenty-two. Sent a letter of requests, and the reason for my reappropriation is that we no longer have a vision to do a alternative education standalone building, we intend to do an intensive day school program, and we would like to utilize the funding as a carryover, instead of requesting additional funding for a program, I just do not see it advantageous of having another school, everyone knows it's hard enough to staff schools as it is, so I would not like additional staffing on any appropriating body, but my request is a reallocation of the funding, the county's portion of the funding, to be reallocated to fiscal, to this fiscal year, if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
So would student enrollment be lower than, when you asked, academic space for listening school?
Yes, sir, we do, yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, let I go back over that, yes, so we're just the secondary level only, middle and high school, for intensive day school program, and in a simple language, what that program entails is this, Kelvin is a frequent flyer, that I get in trouble, and instead of going to alternative school, we're getting in trouble, then what I do is I'm assigned to the intensive day school for a period first time, four weeks, or either six weeks, what I do is work on my social and emotional behavior, I work on my understanding of the rules and regulations, as well as my core subject areas, if I do well in intensive day school, I'm being reassigned to my peers, but if there's any situation where there's a weapon involved, or there's anything that's malicious involved, then we are, we're in a partnership with the Behavioral Resource Education Center, and those students will attempt break versus being in the I T S, and we offer reopening school after school, which goes from four to seven in this upcoming fiscal year.
Any other questions for Dr. Edwards?
Yes, sir, I'm staying, so their day starts at nine AM, and it ends at two AM, where they get the full core subjects, social and emotional learning, and how to understand rules and regulations, so yes, a separate classroom, at E W Y A and at Greensville County High School.
Are there any other questions? If not, was the pleasure of the board. The county's portion.
Second.
Motion's been made in private, second, all those in favor, signify on roll call vote.
Ms. H. Scrub?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Commonwealth?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Next on our agenda is citizens' comments.
First person is Edward Bryant, Jr.
I'm going to stay tonight.
Clint Slade?
I'm going to stay tonight.
Rob, apologize.
Good evening, my name is Rob Probst, and I'm the development manager for the Monarch Solar Project that my company Urban Grid is hoping to commit, I'm here tonight to express my company's desire to develop a solar project that not only meets requirements of the ordinance you've adopted, but to develop a project that is considered a win for the county, a win for the taxpayers, and a win for the environment, we believe we've identified a project location that is the most remote among the projects you've approved in the county, and impacts the fewest individuals. In our recent community meeting where we invited all the adjacent landowners, we only had one individual attend that meeting, and he left satisfied that we would be able to address the concerns that he raised, we've all received positive feedback on the project at a recent Chamber of Commerce meeting, and a Rotary Club meeting, I'm hopeful that you will allow the planning commission's approval of our twenty-two thirty-two application to stand, so that we can move forward with the special use permit application, if there are any aspects of the proposed Monarch Solar project that you have concerns about, I would kindly ask that you share them with Lynn Pope, so that we have an opportunity to address them, at the end of the day, Urban Grid wants to develop a project as leaders of the community are proud of, and can share the credit for the economic and societal benefits the project will bring to Greensville County.
And finally, Mike Ray. Good afternoon, Mike Ray, five eighty-three Scotland Drive, Jared, Virginia, y'all probably know that as well as I do by now, first and foremost, on behalf of the seventeen-ten Transportation Company, which is a Virginia National Guard unit located in Greensville County on fifty-eight East, I would like to invite this entire board and the public to an open house on the fourteenth of August, this open house will start around noon, and there's going to be an informal briefing from the current commander on who that unit is, what they do, and why they would like to have a small activity to get back into the, so I would hope that some of you would come on that day, I will be there as a guest and a former member, I think it's just, it's good business that the local government could be involved with that local National Guard unit, they do great things, and y'all should be proud of them, which I think you are, but come see them on the fourteenth, and that's the primary reason I want to speak, the second thing I will speak on, and I'll keep it short, is I'm certainly in full support of the gentleman who spoke before me, on this solar site, and who's moving more, that it's probably the most remote site that they've seen, I have made the comment that I don't think you can see this site unless you flew over it in an airplane, so if this one can't get past your guys' criteria, I don't think anything could, thank you very much.
Next item is old business, planning commission's review of Monarch Solar's twenty-two thirty-two application.
Good evening, at the July meeting, board supervisors, I brought to you the planning commission's determination of the Monarch Solar's twenty-two thirty-two application, the planning commission, on a five-four vote, determined that the project was in substantial accord with the chemistry plan, the state code, stopped the fire board to take action on the application, however, it does require that we, the planning commission, give their findings in writing to y'all, at that foreword, I think y'all, I made a motion to defer any action on that twenty-two thirty-two determination by the planning commission.
Any questions for Mr. Pope? Now, with the closure, the board.
I'd like to drive the application, ready to read it for this decision. After reviewing and considering of the planning commission finding, according to five-four vote, proposed solar energy facility substantially in accordance with the county's property's, the board of supervisors find the proposed facility has not been substantial in compliance with the county's property's, according, the planning commission acted a ripoff or return, the reason for the board decision includes staff comment that had proposed utility steel solar facilities may not be substantial in accordance with the county's property's.
Ms. Scrub?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Commonwealth?
Aye. Thank you. There's no new business, next we need an adjournment to Wednesday, August third, at two PM for the original budget, and also adjourn from that meeting to August tenth, the credit plan for redistricting.
So.
Second. Motion's been made in private, second, all those in favor, signify on roll call vote.
Ms. H. Scrub?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Commonwealth?
Can I get a motion that we now go into our one-suing committee?
It's under rule second.
It's under rule second, that we begin our one-suing, all those in favor, roll call vote.
Ms. H. Scrub?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Commonwealth?
Aye.
I will pause for a moment, for a little. At this time, can I get approval for consent, for the agenda?
We approve the agenda submitted, second.
It's been moved to second, that we approve agenda, all those in favor, roll call vote.
Ms. H. Scrub?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Commonwealth?
Aye.
At this time, can I get approval of consent agenda?
We approve the consent agenda, it's presented. Second.
It's been moved to second, that we approve consent agenda, all those in favor, roll call vote.
Ms. H. Scrub?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Commonwealth?
Aye.
There is no public keying, there is no items of appointment, there is no old business, new business, this is fully of twenty-two-three proposed budget.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Attachment C in your agenda packet is the proposed FY twenty-two-three Water and Sewer Authority budget. Fund one is our water operating and capital budget, staff has prepared a balance, five million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollar budget for your consideration, fund two is our sewer operating and capital budget, staff is prepared to get balanced, three million, two hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollar budget. And our combined budget for your consideration totals eight million, eight hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. Notes and details, personnel costs, staff is recommending to not fill the currently vacant customer service assistant position, last year you approved the addition of administrative two support position, Glenda Gillen filled that position, and she's doing an excellent job, and she's the reason we're making recommendations not fill that position currently, we're also recommending converting a part-time utility maintenance position to a full-time utility maintenance one position, the Water and Sewer Authorities add numerous facilities in recent years, and we've not added additional staff, the part-time maintenance worker is working out very well, if you've noticed fire hydrants throughout, the Water and Sewer Authority have been painted, we would like to put up the work full-time. The recommended cost of living adjustment, under continuation of the notes and details, the local choice health benefits, we're recommending key advantage, key advantage, key advantage expanded is not recommended, it became cost prohibitive, the authority will pay eight hundred and twenty-four dollars per month per employee, and you can see the different contributions for the Virginia retirement system, group life, health insurance, credit, and high-grade disability plan. Significant expense increases, the Water and Sewer Authority supply, we have essential services that we supply to deliver water, and provide sewer services to customers, homes, and businesses in the community, we also have expenses, all right, and we realize everybody's expenses have gone up, our customers' expenses have gone up, to mentions a few of our increases that we can clearly identify with you today, we have listed, the first one is not due to inflation, it's debt service on water, all right, we're going to have an increase of one hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars per year, because we're going to have to start paying principal and rate covenant on the second rural development loan, this was for the source water improvements, and the fifty-eight West utility extensions, we were paying interest only for the first two years, now we have to start paying principal, rate covenant, anytime the Water and Sewer Authority incurs debt, part of the requirements from our funding agency, the Virginia Rural Water, I mean, the Virginia Resource Authority, is that we collect an additional fifteen percent in rate covenant, to ensure that our rates are sufficient to cover the amount of debt that we have. Water treatment chemicals, we talked about this at the last budget meeting, we received budget bids, and we had significant increases, we're estimating an increase of thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars in FY twenty-three for water treatment chemicals, for the chemicals on our sewer budget, we're estimating an increase of forty thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars next year, staff told you that we were working, or that we were going to bring to you a plan to try to reduce some of these costs, now, the plan we have is not going to reduce the costs in this budget, but we are looking at ways to fund the preliminary engineering report, to look at going away from the most expensive increase in county, when that was chlorine gas, that was approximately a four hundred percent increase, we went from paying seventy-three cents per pound to three dollars and sixty-five cents per pound, one of the ways that we can do that is in wastewater, UV disinfection is allowed treatment, we're doing it successfully now with Skipper's, the new Skipper's wastewater treatment plant, we want to put together a P E R, to look at going at UV disinfection at our largest plant, the Three Creek wastewater treatment plant, and also at Falling Run, as an alternative, we would like to look at using sodium hypochlorate instead of chlorine gas, now, sodium hypochlorate is a form of chlorine, and I believe the increase on that was one hundred and sixteen percent, so, it looks like UV disinfection is probably going to be the best choice for us, but there will be capital costs to implement, all that will be sorted out in the P E R, staff is looking at ways to fund the P E R, rural development has indicated that they are interested in funding the P E R, as, as has Circan, so we're in negotiations with both of them to see if we can secure that funding, and bring a proposal to you. Water purchase, this is probably the most shocking one, Northampton County had a thirty-two point sixty percent rate, water rate increase, now, we purchased water from Northampton County for the I ninety-five North rest area, we're estimating an increase of five thousand, five hundred and nine dollars to purchase water from them in FY twenty-two-three, the city of Emporia had a two point five percent water rate increase, we purchased water from them for the fifty-eight West service area, we're at twenty-two-three, and these estimates are based on water that we purchased through the first nine months of our budget, and projected out what that would be over twelve months. Sewer service purchase, Northampton County had an increase of forty-four point three seven percent in their sewer rates, that's an estimated increase of seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars to purchase sewer service for the rest area in FY twenty-two-three, the city of Emporia's two point percent sewer rate increase is estimated to cost the Water and Sewer Authority five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars in additional costs in FY twenty-two-three. The U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics Consumer Price Index recorded a nine point zero six percent inflation rate from June of twenty-twenty-one through June of twenty-twenty-two. Now, based on that, we, we, we know that, we, we don't believe we need the full nine point six percent rate increase, right, but we're not affected by that rate increase, we've identified the ones that we can clearly tell you what we believe the increase is, but there's many other ones, for example, electricity, both Mecklenburg Electric and Dominion Power had rate increases effective July first, Mecklenburg, we got a pretty good idea on how much that's going to affect us, Dominion's a little harder, there's a lot of things on a Dominion electric bill that are adders, we need a few more months to really figure out how much of an increase that's going to be, but I'm confident that both of them are significant increases, for Mecklenburg, at Three Creek, I estimate nineteen thousand dollars a year in additional electrical costs, that's just for our largest wastewater treatment plant. Also fuel, just like our customers that have to put gas in their vehicles, we have a lot of vehicles in our fleet that are needed to maintain our facilities, and also utilities that are buried in the ground, we couldn't clearly identify how much of an increase that's going to be, because fuel fluctuates, fortunately, right now, it's on the way back down, and I hope it will keep on going, and it will not be a significant increase for us next year, but nobody knows for sure. So in FY twenty-two-three, we're recommending, our administration is recommending a five percent increase in our water rate, and a five percent increase in our sewer rate, the details of the budget, additional details, getting down into the defined numbers, will be presented to you in your first budget work session. But to give you an idea of how our rates compare to surrounding localities in the state of Virginia, staff has prepared a water rate comparison, to give you the background on how we do this, we use Drake or Hayden's and Associates annual rate analysis that they do every year in the Commonwealth of Virginia, it's a great tool for utilities to use to compare their water rates, not only to the state of Virginia, but to surrounding localities, so in our water rate comparison, if you look at this table, and I apologize, it's a little hard to see, I made it as big as I I made it as big as I could to fit on this slide, but the Water and Sewer Authority out of the six localities that we looked at is the lowest rate. And I'll run through them quickly. The City of Emporia was the highest and this is for the minimum bill-paying water customers. Our minimum bill is based on three thousand gallons per month. For the City of Emporia, that would cost you thirty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. The average for the state of Virginia was thirty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. And I should clarify, this is based on the twenty-twenty-one rate analysis that Drake or Hayden did. All right, the twenty-twenty-two rate analysis is not complete yet. So most of the data off the here is from twenty-twenty-one. I will point out that the City of Emporia is based on their July first, twenty-twenty-two rate increase. South Hill, it would cost their customers thirty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Southampton County, twenty-nine dollars. City of Franklin, twenty-six dollars and eighty-four cents. And the Water and Sewer Authority's minimum bill is nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents per month. So as you can see, our water rates are very competitive. We did the same thing for sewer rate comparison, also based on the Drake or Hayden study and Emporia's rates that were effective July first. The state of Virginia was the highest on average year, forty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. But the state of Virginia takes into a lot of localities that have higher cost of living. All right, like Fredericksburg, the cost of living is a big difference than Greensville County. So you have to put that into consideration. Also, the town of South Hill was the second highest at forty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. The minimum bill for sewer was four thousand gallons per month. City of Emporia was forty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. City of Franklin, forty-one dollars and eighteen cents. Greensville County Water and Sewer Authority, it costs you thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents for our minimum bill-paying customers. And the only one lower than the Water and Sewer Authority was Southampton County by thirty cents, was thirty-seven dollars for that minimum bill. Now, how will the proposed rate increase affect our minimum bill-paying customers? Our current residential water rate for three thousand dollars is nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. With the five percent, proposed five percent increase, it would increase one dollar to twenty dollars and ninety-nine cents per month. This does not include taxes, all right? The tax rate will not change unless the locality changes. It's a flat rate for Greensville County. It's three dollars per month. City of Emporia, three dollars per month. The jar is a dollar per month. Sussex, I also believe is three dollars a month, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. But the tax rate is a flat rate based on the locality that you reside in. The minimum sewer bill, how will it impact our customers? The current rate for four thousand gallons per month is thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents. With a five percent rate increase, it will increase a dollar eighty-seven per month to thirty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. Some of our customers are water-only users. Some of them are sewer-only users. The vast majority of them, though, use both water and sewer. And we did a comparison for that also. Our minimum water bill is currently fifty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents per month. With the five percent increase, it will go up two dollars and eighty-seven cents per month to sixty dollars and sixteen cents. If there are no questions, staff looks forward to our first budget work session. And forgive my slide. It says August fourth, but I believe we are in agreement that it's going to be August third at two PM.
Yes.
All right, good. So do you have any additional questions for us before the budget work session?
I know we've just taken in the time of Jerrit. Any of that, and taking into consideration of what calls would have been incurred within that.
Well, we actually had a reduction in our operating costs because we paid off the loan. We paid the Water and Sewer Authority, paid the loan in full, in full, which is a reduction of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars per year that we were currently paying to lease the time of Jerrit's water system. We have applied for grants to replace the old water lines that are in Jerrit significantly increases. Seven million, a little over seven million dollars worth of projects that need to be done in the top of Jerrit as far as water lines. Most of those lines were conject, constructed in the nineteen thirties. There was some, some, an article in the paper that said the water system was completely unchanged since the Water and Sewer Authority took over. I just would like to clarify that that's not completely true. All right, the Water and Sewer Authority replaced the nineteen thirty-five intake pump station with a nice new one that's modern. We also replaced two point three miles of raw water lines that were constructed in the nineteen thirties that are now new, modern, larger lines capable of delivering more water for future growth in Greensville County. In our capital improvements plan, to answer your question, sir, we have money planned in the capital improvements plan to deal with the old water lines in Jerrit. We can clearly identify for sure how we're going to deal with them in this year because we're waiting on the state to give us a response to the grant that we applied for.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is resolution WS twenty-two dash thirty-three.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is, I look at your agenda package at item B on the new business. The Green County Water and Sewer Authority requested quotes, cut grass at the reservoir for five contractors. Nutrick Kim submitted a quote of nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, which was the only response the authority received. Black is board supervisor, water reservoir, grass cut contract to Nutrick Kim in amount of nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and authorized the authority's attorney to prepare a contract between authority and Nutrick Kim and corporation. And also authorized a GCWSA director or assistant director to execute the said contract.
I move approve resolution WS twenty-two dash thirty-three as presented. Second.
Has been moved second to approve as a motion WS twenty-two dash thirty-three. All those in favor, the roll call vote.
Ms. H. Stroud, Mr. Brown, Mr. Kane, Mr. Culliver.
There being no other business, I need a motion to adjourn to August the third for our budget order session. And from August the third, we will adjourn to August the tenth for our meeting on redistricting at the credit plan. I'm sorry.
Just August third.
August third.
I move we adjourn to August third, two PM. Second.
Has been moved to second to adjourn to August third. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Ms. H. Stroud, Mr. Brown, Mr. Kane, Mr. Culliver.
Hi. Thank you all.